Iminet Chertai, Cinco Naslas, La Tour en Guam. It's called to order for our prayer this morning. Will Senator Mary Torres kindly lead us? Please stand.
Kina'ani Tata, ilehe'ni denis Spiritu Santo. Su'us Tata, ni'toro hanatsinya, hu'a gradesi, benedisi, ni'ona'i ham, para tatzotu guinigui La Hisla Tour en Guam. Father, for whom all things are possible, we are grateful for the blessings you have provided to us to work here at the Guam Legislature. Su'us Tata, gi'a'ha'motna, itetsut'ami para itautauta, zata'talini motna para imina'oleki islata. Heavenly Father, guide us forward in our work for our people so we can advance the good of our island. Protehi ham ifamagonmu, na'i ham ani muds'ampasensya guini kifinitina nasessen'ami. Lord, our Father, protect us, your children of the God. Give us courage and patience at this beginning of our session. Amen. Good evening. Tata iminet any Spiritu Santo.
Sijus Masie. For the recognition of a recipient of Ima'ila'zan, mustakilo, na sacrificial, could Senator Regina Biskel Lee acknowledge you for that?
Sijus Masie, Madam Speaker. On behalf of the grateful island and country, we honor Mesitendent Second Class Non-Pety Officer Nicholas SN Fergurger, WWII, and the family of Mesitendent Second Class Non-Pety Officer Sinicolas Fergurger for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Sijus Masie, Senator Lee. And for the recitation of Ina'fresi, will Senator Regina Lee kindly lead us?
Ina'fresi. Gineni mustakilo, gienosoku. Ima'chakilumgi kurasonhu. Zanimasfigu, naninasenyahu. Hu'u'fresen maisidu para bai protehi, zanu difendi, ihinengi, ikutura, ilengwahi, iaidi, ihanu, zanitano'tamoru. Niren shakuridatu ginenazouasata, estihu afitma gihilui bibliya, zanibenderahu, ibenderan Guam.
Sijus Masie. And for the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamoroh and the singing of the national anthem, I would like to ask Senator Telotai Degui and Senator Louise Munia to please begin.
(Singing) Oh, itamoru buhitanota, kantaina tunania ni'toru iluka. Ni'toru i'tempu i'tpas para hita, zan gineni la'ira bendishon. Zeus protehdi islan Guam. Zeus protehdi islan Guam. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the rough hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please take your seats. Madam Plirt, Haji Man Gagiaguni, woodfobot. Senator Castro. Senator Lee. Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Moylan. Speaker Munia Barnes. Gagiaguna na sijus. Senator Munia. Vice Speaker Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rigel. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Shelton. Senator Tidegui. Senator Pito Terlahe. Senator Therese Terlahe. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Sijus Masie, Madam Plirt. This time I'll recognize Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino. You are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to approve the legislative journals dated January 7, 2019, and January 12, 2019, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the legislative journals dated January 7, 2019, and January 12, 2019, are there any objections? If there's no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions. I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Ima'gahagan, Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that messages from Ima'gahagan, Guam, be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they now be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing, no objection. Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, Bills Number 1 through 35 LS through 1235 LS and 1335 COR through 53-35 COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution Numbers 1 through 35 COR through 50-35 COR, be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On the motion, are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. We are in motions. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse senators not present for today's legislative session.
On the motion, are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing, none. Motion carries. And at this time, I'll recognize Senator Joe Sinagastin on your motion.
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rule, I move to place Bill Number 4-35 LS, amended by the committee, onto the session agenda.
Yes. Can I have you read the Bill Number 4, please, Senator Sinagastin, if I may?
The bill is an act to amend Section 24103 of Chapter 24, Title 11, Guam Code Amendment relative to clarifying the additional tax levy on real property improvement at $1 million or more.
On that motion, are there any objections? Senator Will Cashew, you have an...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to rise in objection to the motion for a couple of reasons. First, I have yet to see the committee report. And second, as a matter of procedure or how I think we should move forward in conducting the business of the body, you know, this wasn't an item that was duly put onto or adopted by the Committee on Rules. And so while I may not necessarily object to the bill on its face, I would encourage my colleague to allow the bill, at least to make it to the session agenda. Second, Madam Speaker, in terms of timing, we're not even 90 days, we're not even 90 days into the first part of this administration or our term as senators. And without identifying my colleagues, necessarily unnecessarily, the record, almost a year ago to date, with the exception of two days, there was extensive deliberation on a similar measurement. One of my colleagues even stated for the record, "Let us take a pause."
Senator Cashew, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm just, if I can take a legislative recess just so I can get an interpretation. We're in recess. The 35th Guam Legislature is back from recess. On the motion of the floor, I notice there was an objection. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of having Bill 4, Bill 4-35 LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. Because there's an objection, show of hands for those in favor to put it on the session agenda. To put it on the session agenda. Six. What do you think about six? Motion fails. Okay. We are still in legislative... We are now, ladies and gentlemen, in legislative concurrence. Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Marsh Titino, you are now recognized. I do apologize. I'll take that back, Senator. Because we are in legislative concurrences, I will call on the oversight. Senator Therese Terlahe on the Committee on Health and Tourism for the moving of Therese Ariola.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the nomination of Therese Ariola for Director of the Department of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center be placed on the agenda with the recommendation to do pass.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Sijus Masie, Senator. Senator Joe Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing hereby reports out the nomination of Edward Byrne to serve as the Director of the Department Administration with the recommendation to confirm.
On that motion, any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Senator Amanda Shelton.
Madam Speaker, I move to place from the Committee on Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens on the nomination of Jane T. Flores to serve as Director of the Bureau of Women's Affairs with the recommendation to confirm be placed in the voting file.
On that objection, I mean, on that motion, no objections. Motion carries. Senator Shelton, can you just do the one for Melanie Brennan also, please?
Madam Speaker, I also move to place from the Committee on Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens on the nomination of Melanie Brennan to serve as the Director of the Department of Youth Affairs with the recommendation to confirm to be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, hearing no objections. Motion carries. Senator Regina Biskel Lee, you are recognized.
Sijus Masie, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place from the Committee on Federal and Foreign Affairs, Telecommunications, Technology, and Labor, the nomination of Mr. David Delasola to serve as Director of the Department of Labor with the recommendation to confirm be placed in the voting file.
Are there any objections? Hearing, no objections. Motion carries. Senator Therese Terlahe, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to also place from the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice, the nomination of Linda De Norsey to serve as Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services to be placed on the voting file for today.
With the recommendation?
With the recommendation to do pass.
On that motion, without any objections, motion carries. Thank you, Senator. Senator Shelton. Can you move David Daniel Leongerero, please?
Sijus Masie, Madam Speaker. I move from the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, and the Guam Build Up to move to the voting file the nomination of Daniel Leongerero to serve as the Director of the Civil Service Commission with the recommendation to confirm.
Sijus Masie, Senator Shelton. On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing, none. Motion carries. Senator, Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized. No, I apologize. Ladies and gentlemen, we are on second reading now. And I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator James C. Moyland on Bill Number 19.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to make the motion to place Bill 1935 in second reading for discussion today. Madam Speaker.
Second or third reading for discussion? Third? Third for discussion?
Third for discussion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, please proceed. For discussion, you can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For discussion on Bill 1935, just a brief scenario of what I went through today just coming down to our session. That's as I left my house, I was departed, and I went down the road on Tun Juan Santo Street and came across some huge potholes. I had to go to the left if I decided to go to oncoming traffic, or I had to go to the right if I decided to go into buildings. But I avoided that pothole. After leaving my street there, I went on to Polis Amatoras Road, and I did my intersection at Fajita Hotel, and I had to watch the divider lane in between the two lanes that I noticed was heavily hit all the time and run down, a concrete barrier, constantly run down and run down and run down, only because it's not properly marked. As proceeded north on Polis Amatoras Road, I know where all my manholes are. In addition, the manholes that are too high, and I know where all the manholes that are too low. So I go a little bit left and a little bit right. There's continuous road debris, and there's continuous road hazards that I know exactly where they are all the way up into Agana to come to today's session. And I'm sure a lot of other folks know as well of all the different potholes and obstacles that they overcome getting to work in the morning and picking up the children during the afternoon and getting home at night, too. So Bill 1935 addresses specifically a special fund that was made for repairs and constructions of our roads. And that special fund has been touched. That special fund in the physical years of 2016 and 2017, as we know, were, on the average, about $2 million, $2.15 million annually of that special territorial highway fund was transferred out to the general fund for other government expenditures. Now, the territorial highway fund has generated nearly $20 million annually over recent years. But a very small percentage is truly being utilized for its intent, which are road repairs. And in 2017, the taxpayers were asked to pay even more at the pumps with the increase, as we recall, of the liquid fuel tax because we realized that there wasn't enough money in the territorial highway funds because it was touched. Most recently, since this bill was placed on the agenda, I've seen comments from our publics and constituents asking and bringing to the point of the different roads that are all in disrepair. We often travel at Crown Bakery, between Crown Bakery to Palis and Manila, and it's full of potholes and irregular pavements. Cross Island Road needs fixing. And I've heard of two vehicles already damaged these roads just recently. And there's roads just warping and rippling from the heat and big trucks and movements. Again, Route 8 and the Tri-intersection are just in terrible situation. So what this bill does recommend that we consider is that we make it more scrutinized. We make it harder. We demand that the funds are used just for that purpose, and that's for the territorial highway funds and not for any other purposes. And if such a thing is done again, that we make it an act of a misdemeanor as proposed in Bill 1935. So, Madam Speaker, I thank you for this opportunity to bring to discussion Bill 1935. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sijus Masie, Senator Jim Moylan. Anybody on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Therese Terlahe, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to stand in support of this bill, but I'd also like to point out that... So the bill says that we're going to put a penalty on use of the territorial highway fund if it is used for any other purpose other than those purposes stated by law years ago in 5GCA Section 54102. 54102 outlines certain uses of the fund, which I agree with the sponsor, includes maintenance and construction of highways and roads and village streets and all highway-related plans, programs, and projects. 54102 also includes a subsection F, which I had asked at the public hearing whether these projects had been completed because subsection F also just specifically lists road projects or projects that would be used, that these funds would be used for. And again, this was years ago, so I'm not sure whether these have been completed. But if not, I would like to propose that we include subsection F, unless, I'm not sure if the committee or the sponsor can update us on that. I would ask if the committee chairperson would yield, Madam Speaker, to whether F should be included, has been completed or should be included?
Yes, Senator Therese. Senator... Was that Joe? Senator Terlahe, if I may, you're asking for the Oversight Chair on highways, and if I'm...
I apologize, yes.
That's Senator Clint Rigel on GPW, right?
No, I think it's Senator Terlahe. He's off-island. I apologize, Madam Speaker. I would ask if the sponsor has information. Otherwise, I would just ask that we just include F. In case these projects are not done, then it would not make it, they would not penalize GPW for continuing work on these projects, which include Clara Street in Toto, Toto Canyada Road, things like that.
Thank you, Senator Terlahe. I'm just going to take a brief, brief recess just so that you can write that amendment.
It's just to include subsection F. So where he lists...
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and take a brief recess. The legislature's back from recess. Senator Chalai, Situs Massey. I do have the amendment here. So on the amendment, is there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Telo Tadegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question with the author of the amendment. If we're gonna go ahead and include... I mean, this is definitely a way to make sure that the bill is clean and including of F. Shouldn't we also make that amendment, too, at the bottom page of the bill, after E, with the explanation, as well? Because right now, we just have a short amendment.
Senator, so you're addressing that to the body?
Yeah, I'm actually addressing it to the...
Right. So go ahead and address the podium and the chair and me, the speaker, and then I will work it in inquiry form. So are you asking...
The author of the amendment, Madam Speaker, to also include in this amendment, to write out what letter F is? I mean, we're cleaning up the bill, so that way, we can do it all at the same time. And I'd like her to speak on it, please.
Senator Chalai, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would yield to that question, and thank you to the poser of the question. It's... I think technically, we don't need to put F in the bill, because when the bill's engrossed, we really aren't going to see all of these other subsections. We're only going to see subsection B, which is the only subsection that's being amended to add to item one.
So are you gonna move to...
But I will read F so that she knows what F says. And F, I mean, C, D, E, and F are really not being amended, right? So F is, I'm gonna shortcut it. It's $1.5 million appropriated from Territorial Highway Fund to GPW for repairs of Clara Street indebted in Toto, widening of Toto Canyada Road at the request of the mayor or the director of DOE. Any road leading to any school that is unsafe or does not meet the highway standards established by GPW shall also be repaired under this act. And number four is monetary compensation or land exchange on a value-per-value basis to private landowners whose properties are condemned as a result of the provisions in subsection F.
And that's subsection F?
Yes.
Okay. Senator Telo, does that answer your... Thank you. On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries. On, Senator?
Thank you, Speaker. So just to conclude on the bill, I want to again thank the sponsor. And I know his intention is that any money raised that we say we're going to raise, especially when we raise taxes for roads, is going to go towards roads. And I am in 100% agreement with that. I am actually proud of what the legislature did in the last term in that it made sure that money that was going to other purposes really went back to the use of roads. There are other purposes that are allowed by law for the liquid fuels tax that are not, you know, considered in this section. But that's for another day, I guess. But the village... I mean, the Guam Highway Fund. So this is restricting Guam Highway Fund's transfers. And we have seen transfers in the past from the E911 Fund, from the Guam Cancer Trust Fund. And so we've passed bill upon bill trying to tighten our language, which already says this money shall not be used for any other purposes. And so we're, again, attempting to tighten the language so that, you know, the powers that be get the message that we shall not transfer these monies for any other purposes. But I have to say that, yeah, I have seen languages in past budgets that say special funds will be transferred when they are necessary to make up for, you know, budget bills. But in our recent budget bill, I did note that I'd looked for Guam Highway Fund in the recent budgets, or our 2019 Budget Act, to see what they're being used for. And the Guam Highway Fund was $9.5 million appropriated to GPW, $1.1 million to GPD, $5.4 million to the Mayor's Council, and $2.7 million to GRTA. So I'm thinking that really the... The predicament that the legislature will be in is that it's the legislature that is appropriating the money for other purposes, perhaps. Or I would interpret that most of these purposes are consistent with A, B, C, D, E, and F, which we do, you know, authorize the mayors for village streets to repair the potholes and, you know, make sure that those roads are safe for passage. GPD, the same, same. And so that's why they are getting parts of this money.
Yes.
But the bulk of it really went to GPW. So... And I know that when we were talking about roads before, that, you know, it was really sobering for us because we realized that they had prepared a study years ago that talked about which... I think in 2009, that was the Village Streets Master Plan. These were all the roads that they had decided in village streets, not even highways, that need to be repaired. And the list was so extensive that it cost... And so in the recent terms, we said $58.5 million for the top three on that list. And $16.1 million for the top... And then they allowed the mayors to choose three, again, out of this extensive list. And for the top three from each of the mayors, they were going to spend $16.1 million. So they're gradually, you know, taking care of the items on that list. But the list is very, very long, and we're still facing huge amounts of roads, as the sponsor says, that are in need of addressing and additional funding. Situs Massey, Madam Speaker.
Situs Massey, Senator Chalai. Thank you for that. On the main motion, if there's no other members... Senator... Oh, Senator Torres. I do apologize. Put for bot, conseguir.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer a question to the mover of this bill, if he will so yield.
Please proceed with the question.
In looking at the legislative intent and findings around lines 22 to 25 of Page 1, it discusses how this fund has existed for decades and that of late, it has been used to include other expenditures such as bond pledges, public education, transportation, and the mass transit. So that is the other uses, I suppose, that this is intending to divert. But my question specifically is, in looking at Page 3, if we go to line 15, it's very clear about the appropriation of monies from these funds. And it appears from the plain read of the language that the monies shall be expended only after appropriation is made by the legislature and certification of vouchers and the like, and that there's a reporting requirement by Public Works. So my question to the author would be, if there are strict measures in place for the appropriation of the money, and it all points back to the legislature, who exactly are we targeting to be guilty of a misdemeanor? So now we're saying there's no authorization, too, and that anyone who violates this and transfers would be guilty of a misdemeanor. So if we're the only ones that can appropriate, how exactly does this apply?
Situs Massey, Senator Torres. Senator Moyland, would you like to answer that question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the question. If it's appropriated already by our legislature body, that's not what we're targeting. We're targeting anything new that pops up, similar situations like we saw with the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, similar situations like we saw with the E911 Fund. If it's already built into this, then we should proceed with. But if somehow somebody gets their hands into the cookie jar and wants to use it for something else that we're not aware of, that's where the misdemeanor should come into play. Madam Speaker.
Situs Massey, Senator Moyland. Senator Torres, does that answer your inquiry?
If I may further probe. So that would mean someone other than... Someone in GPW doesn't spend it according to the appropriation and doesn't back it up, or someone at DOA takes it? I'm just trying to understand who that other situation is. Because, you know, another situation, too, we have to consider is if you look at the legislative intent, it also talks about monies at some point of late being pledged towards bonds. And so...
Thank you.
Is that compromised as well? It's the other. Who is the other? DOA, the governor?
Senator Moyland, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Usually, we don't find out until the OPA investigation comes out. Then we realize that things were altered and removed, and that's when we find the true reason for that money to be removed. So whoever is the signer, the signature of that check will be the one responsible for the misdemeanor charge. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moyland. Senator Torres, does that answer your inquiry? If not, thank you. Would you like to speak on the main motion? Continue? Are you done? On, Situs Massey, Senator Torres. On the main motion, if there's no others... Senator San Augustine?
Madam Speaker.
You're recognized.
To the author. So whoever signs the check is the one that's the misdemeanor?
Is that in the form of a question, sir?
I'm just trying to understand what he just last said, if he could be yielded to that question.
That is an inquiry. Senator Moyland, would you like to respond to Senator San Augustine?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to call for a one-minute recess, please.
Please do. We are in recess. We are in recess. The legislature's back from recess. When we left, Senator Moylan had asked for a brief recess. Senator San Augustine, you have the floor. You're still recognized. Did Senator Moylan answer the inquiry?
Not really, Madam Speaker. But I want to make it for the record that number one, based on Budget 2019, Public Works has funded 9.5 of the Highway Fund. Regional Transit is 2.7. GPD is 1.2. Mayor's Office is 5.4. DPW, 2.9. DOA Streetlights, 837,000. DOA Single Audit, 18,000. Ma'am, with this bill, I understand and I agree with the intent. But when we start putting together 2020's budget, understand that if this bill passes, then the Budget Act is going to reflect a shortfall in many areas in the government of Guam. And when that reflects that, I hope that he's ready to get on the table to identify where the money is going to come from because that'll be something that we'll be working very hard to find. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator San Augustine. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Moylan, would you like to close on your bill and send down to the third reading, to the voting pile?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this bill intent in 1935 is for the transfer that is not appropriated or designated for the Highway Territorial Funds there, for our highways. The bill is intended to secure these fundings for the purpose it was meant to be, and that's for the repair and the construction of our roads. Any other necessary transfers that have already been deemed appropriate by the legislative body, that's not the intent. What we are looking for is anything new that somebody wants to touch this without our approval. So thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity.
On the motion to move it to third reading, to move it to the voting pile?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to move this to voting pile for third reading. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On that motion, if there are no objections, motion carries. Senator Kelly Marsh-Tatino, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Bill 23-35.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing no objections, motion carries. We're going to take a moment recess. Ladies and gentlemen, the 35th Guam Legislature is back in session. We will go ahead and I'll entertain a motion, Senator San Augustine. We'll take a lunch recess till 2 o'clock and discuss. Motion without any objections, motion carries.